Time?
Yes.
Okay, it's 4:30. And call this meeting ordered and a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Oh, you want to rearrange it?
Yeah, let's, yeah, we're gonna rearrange the agenda, so we're gonna go to recess.
Or just go to our annex.
Tour, tour, yep, we're gonna go up to tour first and then we'll come back and do agenda and.
Or do the pledge of allegiance.
And all that.
So we'll slide four up between two and three.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do that. So you made a motion to approve the agenda that way? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. You tell me when.
Okay.
There you go.
Time, okay. Alright, we're gonna come out of recess between our tour and the annex building. So need a motion to come out of recess?
I saw them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're jumping to the agenda where we say the pledge of allegiance, let's all stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have public comment on the agenda right now, is there a public comment? If there's not, we have J D. Engineer update.
Good evening, J D King Page County engineer. I wasn't working for most of the day, but I'm here this evening. He got the engineer update on Tuesday evening and the quote summary yesterday. We had the blades out on Monday, working potholes and washboards. And we had the week before also the last several days. On Tuesday. To the rest of the week, Tuesday through Friday, the blade guys are back, we're cutting brush. Most of the roads right now have a hard crest on them and there's not loose rock like there is where we've been blading. And. Because it's, even though it's unseasonably warm, it's still winter time, in fact, snow is possible in there, even speaking of a forecast. This evening, it might be a little snow, we'll see what happens. We're doing some rock haul at the worst spots. City of Northborough requested us to haul some rock and we bill them for rock and a little haul. We're doing brush and trees on N Avenue, north of two, past the. The landfill and on 250th Street, running the shear. I was at Iowa Concrete Pavement Association's workshop last week, so some of this stuff is from last week. Service took a couple mortar grater and a pickup. The, the cat technician came down and went over our new cap machine with the guys. And we had somebody in checking number three, which is the next trade. We finished up cleaning the pile trucks. And. When I'm done with the rest of the engineers' update, we'll get to the, the quote that's on the agenda. Construction continues at the 190th Street Bridge. They poured the west pier cap last week, so they stripped the forms on that this week. They're prepping for setting the center span of beams. And then, then they'll move to the abutments on both ends. The dirt crew's in doing some pipe work. We've been working on project paperwork on 280th Street Bridge, finaling that one out. And project development on the J 53 job and W 65, which is a bridge over the Tarkio on C Avenue. In the southwest part of the county. I'm pleased to report that Montgomery County reimbursed Page County for their portion of the J road construction. They have half the road on 100th Street. So they, they sent 283,886 dollars from their foreign to market account to our foreign to market account. Which keeps our account, which enhances the balance, which is a good thing. Now, we got some training coming up next week in Dennison. Nick and I will attend that, I'll go the first day, he'll be there both days, but I'll go the first day. Then ISAC's coming up in next month. Questions for the engineer update?
On J 53, when does that actually get bid? Is that?
Later this year, like October, November later.
For the project, I'll be drawing down and be bid then.
Right.
Per mile. Okay.
Now, what's not mentioned here is J 55 project bids next week. So we'll have, and for, for this season's construction, that's next week on the 20th.
I thought we had the price on that already.
No.
Per mile on those bid, three different ones?
No.
I only figured it was gonna be lower per mile than what we.
Right, right, that's why we brought it up, that's why we moved it ahead.
When we saw that, okay.
But it's letting.
It's actually been bid then.
Been bid on Tuesday.
Okay.
Next Tuesday. So I'll have a report next week on how that went.
Okay.
If you could turn your attention to the wheel loader quotes. Got quotes from John Deere and Caterpillar. On a. A wheel loader to replace the John Deere that we have now. Is purchased in 2010.
No. Are you adding one, aren't you, I thought you.
Correct, this is.
Have said replace.
This is not a trade.
Right.
We're buying one out right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
The. The warranties are comparable, they call them different, but it's a, it's a comprehensive, you know, bumper to bumper thing for this. This would be their, the best warranty, the most extended one they have. They're both. They're both good machines, we have a John Deere now. But the cat is a little bit lower and I'd recommend the cat.
I would move that we approve the lowest bid from Caterpillar for the new wheel loader at 267,443.72 cents.
Hey, we got a motion and a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Everything's comparable, it's low bid. Any discussion on that? If there's not, we vote.
Yes.
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 Just, this is a, this is a machine on FY 25's list that we talked about during budget time. So it'll be paid for during FY 25.
Right.
After July.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Will we get it shortly after July?
I don't know exactly when. Thank you.
Okay. That's done, next up, we have the library report.
Chris, do you have those?
Good to see you have those.
Gosh, I get to be sandwiched in between my favorite county engineer and my favorite mayor, so we're doing good on the agenda here. Okay, I've got some reports for them. I'm afraid I'm gonna have to talk a while on stall some until Andrew gets here.
We're going to.
Yeah.
He's probably taking his time. Thank you. I'm probably on the new legislation that's pending.
Alrighty, well, it's always really fun to kind of look at all the numbers and, oh, by the way, I'm Carrie from the Shenandoah Public Library and I'm here to give the Page County Librarians Report. I believe joining me is Sabrina Marriott from the Essex Library and then Andrew Hotman will be here as soon as his board meeting concludes in Clorinda. So I always find it really fun to look over the numbers for all of the libraries and compile this report because we always learn a lot about, you know, how Page County uses their libraries. And so I've got a few things that I just wanted to point out to you on this front page and if anybody else wants one, I do have several extra copies. So one of the things that we start off with is a number of visitors that comes through the libraries annually and you see we have it broken down by library, but we also have a total number and we had. Over 86,000 people come through the doors of the Page County Libraries last year, which is a 13% increase from the previous year. It means that almost 300 people walk through the doors of the library every day we were open. And it also means that every citizen of Page County, if you were going to look at it that way, has visited their library six times a year. Which is pretty cool, I think, so we also have over 9,000 cardholders and 1,000 of those are rural cardholders. And that's an all around increase from the last three years, so we've seen an increase in the number of people who have library cards over the last three or four years. As far as items borrowed, we had almost 140,000 items borrowed between the four libraries, which is an 8% increase over the previous year. And again, each year you can see that we're building from COVID, so it's nice to just see it continuing to grow. And a couple of other things that I wanted to point out to you, where we had 16,000 eBooks borrowed, which is also a 17% increase over the previous year. So you can see that not only are we seeing an increase in physical items, but we're seeing an increase in the digital items as well. And then, of course, we had lots of programs last year and we were very excited to get many of those back again as we're increasing. And then being able to do more programming each year, we had almost 18,000 people attend programs at the library last year, which is a 35% increase. And 4,700 more people than the previous year. And we're also seeing that on the program side because we had almost 1,000 programs and that's about 350 more programs than we had the previous year. And so an over 50% increase in the number of programs that we made available at our libraries. And then, in the past, the Board of Supervisors had been curious about the number of public meetings held in our spaces. So that's, you know, anybody from the general public that wants to use our meeting rooms. And we had 563 public meetings last year, which is more than one a day, especially considering we're only open six days a week at best. So it means that the libraries are being used in a variety of ways, not just for physical materials, but as a meeting room space for people to use wifi. Download things, to print things off, I don't know how many people walk through and want to use a notary public at the library or do a fax. You know, we provide a variety of services, so we're so much more than just checking out a book. Not that the books aren't near and dear to my heart, because they are.
So do both libraries have notaries?
You know, I don't know if Clorinda has, Sabrina, you don't, do you?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, there's not one at Essex. I checked with Andrew, but it's something that we added a couple of years ago and we were surprised at how much.
People are always trying to know who, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, you're fine, we have, we have two in Shenandoah, so it's very nice to offer that. And then, as you can see, we do all of that with the income of $860,000 and for, well, $860,000. And then we did spend a little over $887,000 and some of that. Extra you see in the cost is that sometimes we use donations that were given to us in previous years, so that doesn't show up on the income side, but that does show up on the cost depending on which year it gets spent. And so it's not like we were all running in the red because we try very hard to never do that. And, and so, and we did all that we did with a 4% decrease in budget expenses because between the four libraries, we actually had 3,000 less in income than we had from the previous year. So everything went up at the budget. And then on the backside, you can see some of the things that we are really proud of that we did between the four libraries. The, the big picture is that all of the Page County Libraries did partner together to provide baby bags for the hospital. So we purchased board books so that each baby born at the Shenandoah Hospital could go home with a, a book, information about the public libraries in Page County, a library card application. And also a coupon that if the family members had any fines, that we would clear fines for them so that they could have a fresh start to check out materials. And that we did in partnership with Page County Extension and that's something we did last year and we're, we've continued it on this year too. So it's been a really, really nice partnership between the library's extension and the hospital. And so, again, you can see what each library's got. I'll talk just a little bit about some of the things that, you know, have gone on in Shenandoah that we are, are proud of. And then Andrew is gonna speak about Clorinda and Sabrina will talk about Essex. Unfortunately, I did contact Coin, but you have to remember they are a full volunteer library and so sometimes it is hard to get anybody in here to be able to speak. But I know that they are trying very hard to provide a great service to the community in Coin. So some of the things that we were really proud of was that we got to partner with the fire department and so they came out and brought their fire truck for our summer reading program. And some of the other things that we did was during winter break, we had a stuffed animal sleepover, so you could bring your stuffed animals and they got to spend the night at the library and do all kinds of fun things after hours. So we were just really pleased to get to pick back up with children's programming in, in Shenandoah and, and the partnerships that we had with other community organizations. So do you have any questions for me on the front side of the page, anything about the statistics that were listed?
How many, how many people do you have a pool in staffed at the Shenandoah Library?
We have four full-time staff, we have three part-time adult staff and then three high school pages. And, I mean, so 10 people, but again, some work a lot of hours and some work very minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Alright, well, thank you very much for the.
There's a lot, there's a lot happening at the library.
Yes. Yes, I hope everybody comes in on a regular basis and sees us, okay?
Okay, I have finally caught my breath from running up those stairs from my library board meeting, so.
Oh boy.
My name's Andrew Hotman, I'm the library director of the Lee Public Library in Clorinda. I really just want to kind of highlight a few things that we're really proud of this last year in Clorinda. We were able to completely kind of renovate and update our outdoor landscaping, that was really largely in thanks to our Clorinda Public Library Foundation. So it looks kind of drab right now, but it gets nice and bright once spring will come. But we also installed the bike repair station and a bike rack in the front of the library and that has seen a lot of use. And also helped clean up the walkway and entrance to the library as well. Carrie kind of mentioned a little bit, we've seen a lot of increase this past year in our programming. And that's one thing that I feel very strongly about with our library and what we're working on doing at the library is. I coined it, how can we do moments of interaction? Bringing people together to have conversations, participate in the program, interact with staff, interact with their community and help build that community is something that's very important to me. And I hope to continue that in the future at the library. Looking forward, we're looking at updating our website this year. We're also looking and have started the process with Vision 35, which is a visioning and strategic planning process that a number of organizations in the Clorinda community are doing. That will help guide the library, help reach these missions for the community. So if you haven't filled out that survey, you might still be able to, but I hope that if you are asked to, you participate in any of the focus groups that we'll be doing throughout the next couple of months. Before I turn it over to Sabrina, you will get my request for funding, which is actually the Page County's Libraries Request for Funding. The Page County Libraries, those of Clorinda, Coin, Essex and Shenandoah are requesting $46,000 from Page County for library service in fiscal year 2025. For library service to all unincorporated areas of Page County and also the communities of Blanchard, Braddyville, College Springs, Northborough, Shambo and Yorktown from the Page County Board of Supervisors. The funding for the Page County Board of Supervisors would be divided as follows. To Clorinda and Shenandoah, 40.4%, which amounts to $18,340 for next year. For Coin, that would be 2.95% or 1680. And for Essex, 16.25% or 7,540. The libraries in Page County, Iowa have a long history of providing a library service to all rural residents of Page County dating back to June 5th, 1930. For fiscal year 24, the state of Iowa average for county fundings for libraries was $81,000. Page County is the 15th lowest county for library funding in fiscal year 24 in Iowa. Page County is the fourth lowest in southwest Iowa for library funding, that being Taylor, Montgomery, Adams, Page, Fremont, Adair, Mills and Cass. Our requested amount for fiscal year 25 of that 46,000, funding would place Page County at the third highest for those mentioned communities in counties in southwest Iowa. For example, the requested increase, which amounts to $6,050 for next year, Clorinda could add 229 additional children's books. Coin could add 100 new paperback novels. Essex could replace one computer. Shenandoah could add 146 hardback books. So I will give you my printed request and I can answer any questions on this or on Clorinda, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
While Andrew is doing that, I forgot to mention something, I handed out the little thing about teachables and plastic or an educate station. Those are things that we are doing as a joint project between the Page County Libraries. We have asked, we have gotten funding for this, we've paid for it jointly between the, between Clorinda and Shenandoah. Because as a county, we have less population than the minimum city population for any one of these services. So we've gone in together as an entire county, which means that any one in the county has access to these databases off of our library website. So, you know, it's something that maybe we couldn't afford to do on our own, but because we went together jointly, we were able to provide that kind of service. So again, it's the collaborative effort that we do that helps, helps to provide the services for our county and also save money.
So the, the increase would be all books you want to buy?
Well, that was just kind of an example, ultimately those funds would be up to the library board and the library director to, to spend. Just as Carrie mentioned earlier, we are seeing increases across the board for everything. So it would be really to each library to see where the need would be most. I would say with that increase, I would probably put it towards books or digital content because that serves the most people. But we can lose a couple of computers and that's three or four computers right there and there we go.
Do you know, Andrew, this number seems pretty familiar, the 399, how many years it's been since we've increased?
I want to say it's been two or three years since we had an increase.
Okay.
And then prior to that, it was a longer period of time, maybe five or six before it was.
I thought it went up a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it was a couple of years.
What was it before, do you remember?
I mean.
I can't remember, was it 30,000?
When I started 16 years ago, I know it was pretty low.
I mean, even just a couple of years ago, I don't remember.
We've always given more than the.
Than the state.
Than the state.
Yeah.
The state is 20675, which would.
Well, at 10,000.
Is 35,928, so we're actually giving more.
More than what we're required to give.
But.
10,000 out of 138,007%. Just the, the rural. I mean, I don't know what that mouse comes to. Vibrators are good things, you can tell they're busy, they're using them constantly, I mean.
Oh, I know. And I, and I was just asking for information, but what I, what I was trying to get at is your request is for 46,000.
Correct.
That would be $6,050 more than.
What we're currently.
Than we currently give.
Now, that's coming out of, is that in our.
It's a local option.
And do we, we obligated about all that we have?
We have.
Extra.
We have.
As we did the.
But if there's a way.
County. Uh, the fair. And then those two trails.
That's okay, don't worry about it, we can pick it up later.
Plus, we haven't totally finalized all that, we could slide some things around.
Thanks, Cory. Thank you. If there's any way possible.
Yes, and I, this is merely a request, of course, we would all very much appreciate that or appreciate any additional money.
You would take extra.
Not that he's greedy or anything.
I understand if you have to go and work with the numbers and that and don't hesitate to reach out to any of us to ask about services or what this money can do or, or, you know, what we might be able to do in future years if, if, if it's unattainable right now. But we want to work with you guys and we want to continue to serve everyone in, in Page County, that's one of the benefits of a library service, I think, in Page County and southwest Iowa in Iowa. Is that we pretty much are actually open and accessible to everyone who comes in through the door and it's great that we get to experience that and help people out every day.
Couple of years ago, and we talked about this then, when COVID was going on, they were shutting this courthouse down, the library was open. And we used it for elections and everything else, so.
I am, I'm just amazed at, at everything that, that you guys do. I mean, when I went to that meeting in Shenandoah and you were talking about this, you know, the number of people, but, but it's not just books. I mean, it's the programs that you provide and it's, it's the extra pieces of different equipment that you do. And, and give people a taste of something that they maybe want to do at home later and it's amazing to me what you do.
And I'll turn it over to Sabrina, because she's been doing some really awesome things with programming, especially in Essex. And it's always great to see because Carrie and I work with other librarians, both in Page County and outside of our area. And when they start doing programs and things like that, it's just great to see the library strengthen their communities and library directors grow and, and we ourselves grow as we get to help each other.
I have to say, in years past, the three didn't work, the four didn't work together and I think it's wonderful what you do, wonderful.
Hi, everyone, I have something to pass. I didn't read the video, but I'm sorry, she's designed this, but these are some figures for Essex. Thanks, Sabrina. I'm Sabrina Marriott and I'm the Director in Essex. And we have a small library, but we seem to be doing a lot of things. On our report, our card membership is up, we have 820, we have 70 rural cardholders and we had 3,540 people come through the door last year. The items borrowed were 3,908 and the loan to rural customers was 511. I did not figure out the percentage, but last year we had 200. So that is a significant increase in how we're serving our county. And we had 114 visitors come in and use the computers. We had 88, 881 database users and 542 eBooks. Our computer access was 1,825. We had 265 programs, five public meetings held in our small meeting room and 1,816 people visited our library for our programs alone. Rural. Patrons have borrowed 511 items and that is a significant increase. I wanted to thank all of you for your continued support of our libraries. Summer reading was a success last year and we, we did the history of music and voices from history. Every year, the state comes up with a theme for that particular year and then we can devise what we would like for our, for our libraries. And the history of music was great, we did a craft project for each time period, so that exposed the children to a lot of different genres. Different things and the time periods that went along with it, they had a great time. We tried to make drums, I don't know that I would advise that, it got a little noisy in the library. Um, our attendance continues to grow in Essex and we seem to be an invaluable resource for Essex and the rural area surrounding Essex. Part of that is, they do not have a lot of other options for things to do, we have the park and we have the library. Luckily for the library, we seem. We have the park and we have the library. Luckily for the library, we seem to be the best place for the kids to come. We are now cool on the list because it is a footrace to come to the library after school every day, which is very exciting. And we have lots of children that like to come in the summer and participate in our different activities. Some of the people that we have partnered with is the Conservation Department has come and give given several programs for us. And we also try to partner with the Extension Office as well for some of our programming. We will be doing a summer school again this year and I hope that it is a place for the children to come. Learn something new, have some fun and try something different, maybe that they have not been exposed to. Um, in in at their home. So they come in, they play games, they play with the computers, and we have also added board games. And that seems to be great fun for the kids to come in, hang out, sit around a table and go old school with their board games, which is. Great to see. Upcoming programs that we have for the children and adults are after hours movie nights on Wednesdays. We start those at six o'clock. Movie usually gets over eight or eight thirty. Um, we also are starting a craft club two Tuesdays a month. For the young people, we have some good crafts planned. And we're going to start a Lego club two times a month on Thursday evening. That has been requested by some of our patrons. And some of our younger people. By focusing certain areas and purchasing extra books. Um, I worked on the middle elementary, which would be first readers, first chapter books. And by focusing and spending some of our resources on books in that area, we have increased by twenty five percent. In checkouts in that area alone. So the children are thrilled, they have choices, and hopefully by starting them young, we will create lifelong readers. We also are doing a weekly storytime. And my storytime group seems to be a little bit older, which is actually fun. We can do, read a story, have a snack, and then do a program. Um, I am also going to be going to the daycare center in Essex. Once a week, it's hard for them with staffing issues to get people to come to our library. So we are going to go over one morning a week and work with the younger children. So I thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
I visited you.
Yes, you were very busy then.
We were.
And thank you so much for coming. I invite the rest of you to come and visit.
Glad to have you up there. Doing a good job.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, thank you Sabrina.
Have a good night.
Yes. Okay.
So we'll we'll talk about that.
With the budget, we'll look things over and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See what we can do. Okay, next up on the agenda is a resolution. Sixty one declaring uh the EMS and Essential Service in Page County. Ty, you want to go ahead?
Hi, Davidson EMS Director and Shenandoah. Uh, more importantly, um, for tonight. Um, I am the current Chair for the Page County EMS Essential Service Council. So. And that is what I'm speaking on behalf of for tonight. So uh, first of all, thank you all for letting us be on the agenda again tonight. And uh, having us back and your contin- continued consideration for making EMS an essential service in Page County. Uh, real quick, just wanted to kind of give you guys an update on what we've been doing since we spoke since October last year. Um, on January thirtieth of twenty twenty four, we were able to have a forum where we had representatives and voting members from every community. Um, also representatives from both hospitals and uh come together and have a conversation. Uh, at that meeting, at that meeting, we had two main uh agenda items to discuss. We had several agenda items, but two main ones that I'd like to just kind of. Touch on here tonight. So first, we proposed and voted on and approved the Page County EMS Advisory Council to be an official organization. We discussed the proposed charter in detail and uh have made a few recommendations. Um, just for clarification to be voted on for final approval on March fourth um next month. This charter outlines and identifies designated representatives and voting members from every community in Page County. Uh, we voted on uh positions for a chair, vice chair and treasurer. We also established a bank truck, bank and trust fund account uh location where we wanted to establish that. And finally, we discussed and requested that each department compile an equipment needs list uh for each service area. The purpose of this was uh requested so that we could prove to you all that the. The levy tax dollars that we're asking for would go towards necessary projects and throughout Page Cr- Page County. Um, on February twelfth, here just the other night, the advisory council met again and formed a quorum. In this meeting, we had two main objectives. First, um, just to review, just for understanding of what the resolution was that we were working on, working towards. Which was approved uh for publishing by the Board of Supervisors on October twenty twenty three to be voted on for the first time today. Um, collect, the the second thing was to collect and discuss the equipment's needs list from each service area. And some of the existed, uh, the examples that we had, we compiled uh include, not limited to, but uh include. Uh, our number one priority is to help support the smaller communities and grow and strengthen their services. Um, obviously, Clarendon and Shenandoah are still the the two major responding services in the in the county. Um, but we, our goal is to strengthen those smaller communities so that we can get some response from skilled, qualified, certified members. Uh, to the location to take care of our patients until the two larger services, uh whoever that might be can get get to the patient. So. Um, a couple of ideas that came up in that meeting was, uh, as we spoke in October. Our plan, our, the idea is to take ten thousand dollars off the top for each of the small communities you give to them. And just kind of another ideas, we're trying to encourage new people to get into the field. One of the ideas was to pay for education and train, the training on a contract uh to retain those those individuals in Page County. With the services. A couple of examples I had listed, which you all have copies of, is EMT classes cost about fourteen to fifteen hundred dollars and takes a four month class dedication. Uh, an advanced DMT class is about sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars and that's also a four month dedication. Paramedic class can range anywhere from fourteen to eighteen, twenty thousand dollars a year for uh for the class. And that's a one, at minimum of a one year full time dedication. Uh, another idea was to pay first responders in these communities to respond to calls. Or dedicate twelve or more hours at a time on shift to ensure a response from these communities. At that looking like they would take a schedule, they would take a shift and they would guarantee that they would respond if the pager went off. It wouldn't be a volunteer situation where they could pick and choose. If they were, I'm just not going to get out of bed today for this one or whatever it is, they would respond. And we would pay them for the call or pay them to be on call or or something along those lines. We're just a couple of ideas that we had for that. Uh, some of the other ideas that we had for was more more directed towards equipment. Obviously, equipment wears out, gets old and needs to be replaced and kept up to date. Uh, some of those devices include a power cot and a load device, which is hydraulic and battery powered. That reduces the lifting of our patients, uh therefore improving safety of our crews and safety of our patients. That system ranges is right around fifty thousand dollars to to purchase just the equipment. And then uh an additional charge to have it installed in the ambulance. Um, AEDs and cardiac monitors for early diagnostic and treatment of patients in cardiac crisis. Uh, an AED can range anywhere from two to three thousand dollars. Uh, a cardiac monitor is about twenty six thousand dollars. Um, Lucas Devices, which is a CPR mechanical device. Um, that would, it improves CPR by about as an additional sixty five percent. Of uh true cardiac output um during CPR. So uh, much needed. Those come in around thirty five thousand dollars. And then a big ticket item, something that would not be purchased every year, of course, but it would be kind of on an as needed basis. Uh, is an ambulance and those are right now sitting at about three hundred thousand dollars and they're about a two year. Uh, about a year and a half to two years out from the day that you order it. Um, we also discussed in that that the smaller communities obviously probably won't buy a brand new ambulance because they just won't use them as much as Clarendon and Shenandoah do. So kind of our idea, our plan is to do kind of a hand me down project where we give the smaller communities maybe our equipment. Once it starts getting higher in mileage so that it can live out the rest of its life in the smaller communities and then Clarendon and Shenandoah purchase a new ones. Obviously, if a service were to break down and need something more urgent, we would vote on that. We would could have that conversation. And potentially it uh provide the funds for the smaller services to buy an ambulance that fits their needs. Um, today, today we are asking you to continue to show your support for making EMS an essential service in Page County. By voting to approve the provided resolution for the second of four votes. Um, this will allow us to continue our campaign by educating the public and all the communities in Page County as to why it is so important. We would pro- uh propose the resolution we voted on upon the general public at the general election in November of this year. So welcome to any questions.
On your, I've, who, what makes up your board then? How do you set that up?
So we've got a chair, a vice chair and a treasurer.
We have, no, I'm saying, who do you pull from the mayors or how do, who's making up your?
Yes, sir. So each community will have a representative and a voting member. Um, and we do, we already have that, that are already named and we can get you the list of all those individuals.
Is it the city council or the mayor? Who, is it just people?
I think it's just on, just people. Some of them are mayors. Individuals.
Is the board represented on there?
Yes.
Yes.
A member for the Board of Supervisors on there.
Todd, Todd is the board representative.
For the future, there's one from them and there's just each community.
Each community, then the hospital has a representative and a voting mem- or a representative. And then also their medical director is also on that, the charter.
Uh, how many total, total voting members is there?
There's uh seven total, six, seven total voting members, so four is, four people is a quorum. Everybody else is basically a representative.
Jill's on it also.
Yep.
Yes, yes, the EMS, Jill Harvey. It's a pretty good diverse group.
So. See the math. Originally, when we were talking about this all these meetings, it was to. Shenandoah had a big negative uh in their budget and they were trying to get some help with that. So.
We'd re- so Shenandoah, just just to clarify, Shenandoah was was uh, we were being transparent with our budget. Uh, we do believe that. We are comparable to the rest of the state, even the nation, as to our loss.
Well, okay, so we need to just go forward with just.
Yeah.
The next step and putting this on the ballot.
The vote, so what our intention is to be here uh for the next, this tonight and then the next two weeks uh to just continue the process. And then in two weeks from tonight, uh will be the final vote for for you folks. Uh, and after that, it will, it would be final to go on the ballot for November.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion that we just continue the resolution.
Continue Resolution sixty one or what's the right word to to continue into this? Continuation.
The second of four votes.
Second of four votes for the. Resolution to make this uh emergency uh. This essential service, EMS and the central service for Page County.
Okay, I have a motion. A second.
I'll second it.
One second. Any questions or discussion on this? I think we understand. We'll vote. We'll vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you for you guys all coming in here and all the education and everything.
I have, if you want, I, for a copy or we can email to you. We have a list that has everybody listed on it for the representatives and voting.
That's fine, just email it.
Just email it.
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you for all the work and volunteering and all you're doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
Okay, anybody else want to talk about that? We all good? Well, if we're good. Then we'll go to the next item. Got the resolution. We don't sign it till the last time.
Yep.
Yeah. So you just put resolution numbers on, so you don't have to print it every time. Okay.
Okay. Next up, we have, yeah, thanks for coming in here. Number nine there, we have a Washington Township trustee. We have a new one, uh, James Whipple's going out. Well, thank him for his service. And uh, they have made us aware Steve Armstrong would like that position. So need a motion on that.
Make a motion, we put Steve Armstrong on the Washington Township trustees.
To replace Jim Whipple.
To to replace Jim Whipple. Sorry.
Okay, a second on that. Any discussion? Steve did a great job. Hold on.
Yes.
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 All right, that done. Next up on the agenda, we have a change in the Valley Township trustees. James Olenius was on there. Thank you for his service, all the years he put in and Will Forsythe has shown interest, so.
I move that we appoint Will Forsythe as a Valley Township trustee to replace Jim Olenius.
I'll second that.
Motion a second. Again, happy. Pretty willing to do this. We'll vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, those two things done. All right, next up on the agenda, let's see here, is Tom on the phone or in the, if you hear?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Can you? Okay. On uh, is JD still, uh, is he still in the room?
Yes.
Yes, did you hear?
JD sent me and JD sent me an email earlier. He didn't have, you know, the operational cost per hour on the motor graders. Did he ever, if he's there, did he ever come up with a? The total cost per hour, depreciation, fuel, wear items, you know, maintenance for oil changes.
He's saying no. He says no.
Well, it's pretty concerning, you know, we've got some pretty good librarians. They know the utilization on their meeting rooms. I don't know how you can manage something you don't measure. You know, we've talked about needless blading of the roads. The soft aggregate that we have results in degradation, segregation. We lose material into the ditch. Egg producers in this county, they realize what loss is. They're combining, they check their head loss, they check the loss of any grain going through the machine. It's very visible in our road ditches, we do have loss. And it's the larger particles and the gradation of the material. That had been tested by the engineers department looked good with the the low amount of. The lower amount of fines, but if you take that and one sample that I have right here. Where what you purchased was the eight sieve, the spec. Is zero to fifteen passing. Uh, the one I have looking in front of me, the numbers ten sieve, which is very close. To the number eight and it's fifty one point nine percent passing and that's off of the roadway. And so. The expert from the quarry, maybe we should have him come back and he could give us. A needed gradation on material to add to what we have on our roads. To even get it close to the specification that. You are now buying. And the one that I just talked about was not where there is clay. Otherwise, it would have been a lot worse. So. If we did, I can send you results that look pretty. They're they're very, very poor. And so when we talk about unnecessary blading. I was concerned about and also somebody that rents ground on N Avenue. You know, Judy, I had sent you a, an email on the fifth. And. I asked, I said, well, you ask the engineer why tax money is being wasted blading the dirt roadway. roadway on N Avenue north of a hundred and seventieth street. Money was wasted earlier as it was bladed needlessly in the week prior to Christmas. What is the logic for the wasteful expense incurred, which includes machine hours, cutting edge wear and fuel consumption? And I get a response, I'm sure you could go up to the engineer directly. However, after your comments a few weeks ago, I spoke to that grader operator and others. That section was bladed because there is a new home being built and there's heavy traffic. The road was washboarded and, excuse me, and needed it. Also, all roads are bladed at this time of the year. I will leave it to our engineer and our blade operators to know how to handle the road issues. And I responded, you know, Judy, I contacted you because I wanted answers and that has not happened in the past. Please check with the county employee to verify the facts. A new modular home will be delivered sometime to an address on N Avenue approximately five hundred feet south of a hundred and sixtieth street. That is over three quarters of mile north of a hundred and seventieth street and those loaded mixer trucks the concrete are not going to drive that dirt though. And I said, the only traffic to date has been excavating equipment, concrete form, one ton truck, concrete mixers and a pump truck. And I said, the traffic has used a hundred and sixtieth street as it has traveled past my residence. It would be senseless to travel a hundred and seventieth street to N Avenue and then north because after crossing the bridge, the traffic would then be required to turn one hundred thirty-five degrees in order to travel north. And I said, check with CSI, that's the concrete supplier, dispatching Clarendon as they would not have the loaded mixers, negotiate that turn and drive three quarters of a mile on a dirt or level C road to the delivery site. And as far as all roads are bladed this time of the year, normally we have frost. And it does not do any good to blade this time of the year. And so I don't know, as far as getting responses like that, I guess would there be any objection to mounting cameras on the equipment, it's very common state maintenance? Because when you get responses that are, are not true statements, to eliminate some of this and wasted time, wasted conversation, wasted money, if there were cameras, if you could see the road as before the machine manipulated the material and then after. And on the subjects of cameras, I mean, we see photos, I see on the meeting there of a new motor grader in the shop, a bridge abutment, but yet there has not been any tour that I know of or photos taken on that M sixty-three project, which when I sent emails, I got the same response as when I got when I asked about uh the needless blading. I guess I, I would ask get a policy to not just be operating machines because the frost is out of the ground. This time of year, you need to leave it as undisturbed as possible because when our spring rains come, if that material is loose, it will not shed the water like it is when it is, has been compacted.
Well, JD, what's the idea on that? What is the, it, blade the dirt road right now, if it turns wet here like it will, what is the idea be bleeding right now?
We're definitely not playing dirt right now.
All right, so, and that'd be a policy that we are making roads soft when they're not going to get.
The, the top of the engineer update addresses that.
Just working on rough spots.
We're not playing Willie Dilly right now.
Can you hear that, Tom?
I did not hear that response. I could, I didn't understand it, no.
Where's that handheld microphone? Where's it at? The handheld is it, right there?
So right now the blades are out, but they're doing, filling in potholes and washboards.
Turn it on there somehow.
As far as washbars, right there at uh M sixty-three, eleven there and uh hundred and sixtieth street, that was washboard back before we even received any snow, but when I get, when I get an email that, well, the employee says there's a lot of traffic, uh, it's a modular home, it hasn't even been delivered. And no, there's not a lot of traffic and we're talking about maybe nine hundred foot of gravel from the intersection of N Avenue, one hundred and sixtieth street to the driveway where I don't know what that pour took, if it took six or seven loads of concrete. And so that, I guess I would like to visit. I'd be more than happy to visit with the engineer, any one of the supervisors, that county employee. You know, there's a renter on that ground and he approached me. He wondered the same thing I wonder, why are you out there just adding machine time, expense to your county budget and we've been talking about, or using up your county budget. And we've been talking about trying to get our granular surface roads better for many years.
Uh, do other counties have cameras on graders? Has anybody done that? Do you know of any?
I don't know, we have uh vehicle locators.
Where they are.
Um, where they are. But we don't have cameras.
Well, I think, I would ask that uh you definitely start keeping an accurate operational, hourly operational expense on those machines. That's a large expenditure.
We have that.
We have the data, I haven't put it together yet.
Per hour.
Right.
Fuel, because that's going to even show in buying graders, if somehow the deer or the cats more efficient per hour, I mean, over all these years, ten thousand hours. So you have the, you have the data?
We have the data.
We need to put that together. That is a good idea, so we know what the cost to operate per hour. And then when you send them out, we know what we're spending.
So if you can say ten percent, if, if we knew what that was, ten percent would be significant and that would just be less opportunity to lose material from the roadway into the ditch, never to be retrieved. Although I've been told the rock retriever and you know, you know my feelings on that because statements have been made that just they're not achievable, not by a human being.
Well, so on the, are you putting together that data to see what cost per hour? So you're looking backwards. How far back do you go? What do you have to look at the machines we have right now or give us an average cost per hour? You have it.
We don't have a, we haven't figured out. We're going to look at the data. And, you know, last, pick, pick a timeframe.
And just study the window.
Yeah.
Give us the cost per hour. Okay.
If you take the last machines that were traded in, you can, that depreciation, that's very easy there. That fuel cost isn't fair, a delivery that goes to each one of the districts and, and that brings up something, how many districts? I thought we had five, but is there more than that?
Seven, seven district.
Okay, but each, each, there's a fuel delivery, I guess, goes to the tank i- in, except maybe what is there? Of one or two that would fill out of a tank at the county shop?
How many, did you say? How many leave the county shop? What did you say?
No, there might be what, one or, I don't know, is there one or two uh blades operate out of the county shop? Do they fill out of the tank there?
Fuel tank, there's two that come out of there.
We keep track of fuel by the machine.
So we would know.
So we can track that. We have the data, we haven't put it together.
I mean, that, that'd be so, so simple and my goodness, it wouldn't uh, I mean, the, the expense on that's huge. I just don't understand that because of the contractor, I guarantee you. You've got to know that information in order to bid a, a, a project. And that's something I think is huge neglect if that is not tracked. I mean, you ought to be able to, I know one contractor, he put a sign right on the machine and it had costs and it had incentive. So his employees knew and then what he was trying to do is just motivate them because they could see what those costs are, they could see what their incentive was on smoothness on the paving that was done properly. And so eh, eh, I, there again, you ought to have the sign right on the back of the machine. This machine costs so many dollars an hour. We're out there trying to get the best result for you. Well, if you're going to do that, then you're not going to be out there needlessly. And I've said that one time to somebody, you don't send the snowplows out if there's no snow on the road.
So we need to see what it costs per hour to run these things and then look into, that isn't known, I mean, any, any business would have that, what it costs to run per hour. So we'll put that. Right.
Yeah, agriculture producers, you gotta do that. You gotta know what ground needs extra inputs, what ground does not. And, and, and in today's grain prices, that's going to get a lot more critical.
Right.
And Tom, I, I would just tell you, you know, one thing too, there's a, there's a real concerted effort on the board. You know, we understand the issues we have with roads and, and what needs to and, and we are definitely trying to work and, and work on a lot of issues and and improve, prove things. So I want you to at least know that, that those, a lot of those things are being addressed.
And I applaud, you know, I was, I have stated before, you know, trying to get the reduced fines, that is a great step forward. There again, the figures, the numbers don't lie. And when you take that gradation compared to what is on the roadway, that is a good step forward. But when we talk about repeatedly blading a dirt road, for what reason? And it's just machine time, it's, it's money, it's, it's money that's out the window. The, the result is, is of no value. And everything we try to do nowadays is what is the value? You know, we hear that from the everybody that, that for their department. What is the value? And so I, I'm just pointing that out that you've got to be able to measure or how do you manage?
Well, I think we need those numbers and figures and then we can make some decisions based on that, based on the figures, so it'd be good to put that together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Well, next up, number uh twelve, there's board communication. We went over into the uh engineer's office in the annex there earlier this evening. Looked at it and uh looked, just to, to look at an option of using the second floor. And a couple of years ago, we were out there, I was out there looking at it with uh the previous board. Adding dirt, that's what I looked at, seemed to make the most sense, was trying to add dirt to the west side to bring it up to make a parking lot so you can walk right in and where the window is, put a door. Now I have no idea what that's going to cost. Uh, as far as the county doing it, is there any to haul dirt or any of that nature? Is there, is that something that if we get some kind of plan put in place or some kind of bid, is that something you'd do?
We would need to get reimbursed for the secondary roads, that's not part of secondary roads.
Well, it's a budgeting issue, line, moving money around, yeah. Or look into whatever it costs, have somebody else do it, just we have trucks and excavators and places we can get dirt, so. Anyway, just we're, are, are we interested, we're going to talk about that roughly and looking into what that would cost?
I think we need to look into it.
I heard anything to look, and that makes the most sense if that top, or to make it the most useful.
And if that was the way it was JD, it would just be a parking lot on the west and you could just walk right in.
It would make the two, it'd make two buildings out, basically.
Yeah.
It was.
So it'd be real easy to get into.
And the gas line a few years ago come up that's over there and I don't know why in the world you couldn't just add a few feet to the gas line, put dirt there, I mean, just bringing it up is all you're doing, so. But we need to look into that and get somebody to give us an estimate or a couple of bids or what to raise that up to have the parking lot and a door, just to walk right in there, so.
Yep.
Need to reach out to some contractors on that. Do you have any contractors JD, you think would be a couple we could reach out to and then the county put together something if they would like to do it or something, some figures. Will we go forward with that? That's what we want to do, getting some figures?
Can you drop, I mean, whatever needs to be done? Just the dirt, whatever?
It's about five foot of dirt, the deepest spot, according to the tape measure. And it's got the slope, it's got the slope two ways, of course, you look at it or if we need to draw up something. You can, well, that's all, that's what it needs to be.
Just to get it up for that, yeah.
So let's, so is that something you want to kind of go out there and look at it and shoot it real quick and kind of give us a ballpark idea? That we can let some other people? Yeah.
No tomorrow.
In the morning. We're going to have to, well, we might have to put a retaining wall in, I don't know, we need to look into that to hold back completion on the building, unless it was designed to handle it, we need to look at that. That's just something to look into. Right, okay. And maybe somebody puts a wall in, then we haul the dirt in and we have a parking lot.
You look at it and tell us what we need, how's that?
Okay, have a look at that and then we can look at the best decision when we get our information. Okay, anything else in communication?
Um, I had an inter-agency meeting last week and we had a room full of people from different agencies and so many ideas and so many things going on, uh, you know, the book bags that Carrie mentioned tonight were, were mentioned there and there's a picture in last night's paper or yesterday's paper and um, you know, just so many good things that are available to county residents. So.
Yeah, we had our essential service committee meeting on uh Tuesday. And uh like I said, that's, that's been really good, that's had several meetings and lots of good discussion. And then we had the ISAC thing last week, which was great.
We'll go to, or.
One day. And then we got the spring one coming up, but then.
Yeah, on Monday.
Yeah, the supervising meeting was good.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting.
Kind of unsettling on some things that are happening at the state level as far as bills that are proposed for the libraries and for supervisor district and for, I would say for mental health and
Yeah, there was a lot of.
That one's really a disturbing one. When they tell you
Yep.
When the director of HHS tells you that you have too many beds in Iowa and you get down to the nitty gritty and they're talking about too many nursing home beds.
Yeah.
It was like, what? Iowa has an aging population and you're saying too many nursing home beds? It was like, what? Iowa has an aging population, and you're saying too many nursing home beds. And some of the supervisors that were there mentioned in their counties that people are having to be put in a nursing home forty miles away from their home, which isn't a good thing. But they're saying we have too many beds, so going bigger is not always better.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know where it's going.
Well, we got that, uh, I'll have the council boss next week for a meeting, we anything else? We got a big stack of claims here. We have two, two weeks worth of claims here, last week too.
I would move that we approve the claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion in a second on the claims for the fifteenth and the thirty-first. Any discussion on them? If not, we'll both end.
Yes.
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 Okay, uh. Next up on the agenda, we have the minutes. Where did that go?
Yep, like I said, mine did not, mine did not turn out, but the only, only uh issue I saw was the wording of uh, the rewritten.
Yeah, so and that, that's what I saw too.
Me handing out rewritten minutes, other than that, it was, it was very good.
So on the uh remove mayor presented his rewritten minutes, the word rewritten, it's been amended. So, um. Make a motion to, make a motion to amend the minutes. According to our public information guidelines.
What are you removing?
It's just right here, I just said the words, remove the word, mayor presented his rewritten minutes. So I made that motion. Second, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would, yeah, I just like it to say amended minutes.
It doesn't need to, there's discussion, then we had a motion. Um, the vote, please.
Yes.
No.
Yes, okay, that done. So we're to the end, if there's anything else we got to do, you ready for it? If we're good, we can adjourn. All right, Tom made a motion to adjourn, we got a second?
I'll second it.
A second, all is in favor?
I have.
I'll return, thanks.